Yeah, I think.
Two minutes.
Two minutes right on time.
It's on time or off?
Yes. Yeah, we.
Spike it.
Or open the plan board for August 11th, 2023. If that's 22, sorry. At 5:59 PM. Independence Istanbul Bozo and Kim Mongier and myself, Pete Morse. First word of action, I guess, is to approve minutes for July 14th, 2022. Just, I only noticed one, so real quick, real quick. Jerry Damon is Jared from Damon.
Okay.
It's not a, not a big deal, but just. Proper. You're calling us?
Probably make a motion to make acceptance of minutes to the red with the change.
That was quick. This business is the flood hazard development application. It's by Joey Hoot. Okay, well, I guess this is the first for me, first for everybody who can see something like this. So go ahead and give us a little explanation on what was happening. Please.
Um, so we would like to, um. Oh, it's not this. There's a lot to this. So we did this flood elevation certificate. I think Ken, didn't you print that, Kingston?
Yeah, I believe you've given the due, because the one you have originally, probably the PDF version, that has been changed since.
Yes.
So, yep, yep, because it had an address error on it and I think that was the only error. Oh, yeah, and then they had.
Was the error in the, on the address?
They had their Costco address on there and this is, I think this is speaking to the actual location. So I just wanted to make sure it was correct.
That's on the certificate itself?
Yeah, it was weird because it, isn't that your understanding where it's.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no doubt, yeah.
Yeah, and it was consistent all the way through and so I had her correct that. And then he also, the surveyor had put that it was in zone A, it was in zone AB. So I corrected that. He also said that it was partially in zone A, but I didn't see that on this. I don't see where it says zone A.
Is there a flagman?
Yeah, it's a big color. Should have that.
I think it said one site, one website it was on was zone A and then the firm site was AB. So that's why we just switched it to AB.
Yeah, well, I only see zone X and zone A, so definitely AB. But, you know, that, that was correct too.
And then they, he determined that the base flood elevation was 309.
Says a red on there, yeah.
Yep. So then Kingston printed some pictures for you. He had put, the surveyor put a nail in the tree.
So you don't have to be, but if you're here, that nail on the tree at the top of that pink ribbon, uh, that, that pink ribbon that goes horizontally across the tree is the 309. Nail at the top of the ribbon is, will be 310, 310.
So what's the distance from the ground? He said.
Three minutes, 309.
Pretty much, yeah. Three, three feet ten.
Oh, shit. What's, we don't know the elevation of the base.
Well, that's.
How far the ground is.
Oh, that's the survey, that's the surveyor putting that line there. So he said that's the 309, AB.
So look around by eight. Did that?
That's, that's one foot. And that looks like.
Six foot ten off the ground to that.
Eight foot ten, yeah.
Yeah, and so he, Craig, also took a picture of the grade state showing, this is actually the site. He did a transit based on that, basically an elevation reference point.
Honestly.
And where he's pointing his finger to is where the new grade will have to be in order for the RV's floor elevation to be. I think it's at 310. So what is it? He said four foot or three foot ten? Three foot ten is this one we're pointing to.
I'm looking at.
And they had three feet from tires to.
He's got on the, he's got these elevations on the ground here.
Yeah.
And then they're 302. So if it's, if this is 302 or 303, it's gonna have to be six feet to get 309. And then four feet to get 300. And that's what he did.
That's what they, exactly what they included. So that state is, I believe, that 302, what does it say, 302.4, is that correct?
Yeah.
Because that's where the site's gonna be.
Yeah.
So he did this and that's why they.
So he's over eight feet, uh, eight feet above that to 310.
But if you subtract the three feet from the base tire to the, uh.
Four, okay.
I'm just going to do base out of the four.
Yep, that's where he gets the four foot or three foot ten, correct, out of that. So in order to satisfy this, to be at 310. You tracking now? It's, it's, yeah.
The four is the four is the four.
Right.
I don't care what we.
Well, that's, that's what they're factoring because the wheels have to touch that pad, the ground. So what they're trying to figure out is how high that ground has to be. The ground doesn't have to be at 310 in the case.
Elevate has to be at 310. I understand that, that's what I'm saying.
So they did the math on that and that's where they figured this measurement.
That's how high the pad's gotta be?
Exactly.
And then the wheels are set up on that?
Yep, and then that's where that 39, 310 is gonna be.
That's gonna be quite a pad.
Yeah, yeah.
Three foot ten tall.
Yeah.
From the elevation of the ground right now.
Yeah, and so the tires are healthy?
So from the ground to the, to the top of the floor is three feet.
Three feet for the tires. And then, and then another what foot for the, between the tires?
No, from the ground level to the top of the floor is three feet on, on here.
Okay, so beyond the tire, not necessarily tires on.
Yeah.
No.
We have the nail on the tree so that the floor will be where that nail is.
Absolutely, yeah.
Which is one foot above.
So you are planning to set it at above, at the one foot above, therefore you're gonna keep it permanently there?
Yes, and we plan on anchoring it, which we'll, and then tether it. And we put all the shoreline, I mean, the flood paperwork with, we'll work with him to make sure it's.
We'll, I, I think we have to, after the camper, the RV's replaced, it has to have another elevation certificate. Has to check for that elevation, make sure it's repaired.
The, the other thing too is that this doesn't really, it doesn't change the old, so, uh, shoreline zoning application, but they, they made a mention of it. So because of this height having to be included in this, let me see if I can find it for that sketch. If you help, I have a copy of the sketch showing the layout of the.
Look at this.
Wonderful.
This one right here. So.
I had it in my, if one of them.
What, what was it?
Yep, from the backside of it. Oh, yeah, she was, she was saving paper.
Sure.
What does that say, 20 to 30? Okay, 35 for the driveway. So where that square, where those lines have their corners, that's gonna be bloomed a little bit, a grade. Exactly, so, okay, so as long as you understand that and everything's fine there, uh, that's gonna obviously be something that they're gonna do. But that shouldn't impact shoreline zoning application. That's basically required based on this whole point application. So they initially know about that amendment or anything, I didn't do so. This, this is the amendment, basically.
Sorry, I was tracking them now.
Uh, they just, when they build a pad up, the extra three, two, someone feet. And then they're gonna, you know, they're gonna have a slope three to one or two to one, probably three to one. And so it's gonna, it's gonna have that back, back up slope. So rain run off.
How's that gonna work coming into a little driveway and?
Well, I'm not gonna move it once it's there.
Right.
Right, then you're gonna have a creek.
It's the first initial.
Well, no, I, didn't you speak to having a ramp come in from the next to roadside?
From the roadside, yes.
They were gonna basically make it so they can drive onto it.
Oh, cool.
And then, well, no, then ramp will just be.
That'll be part of the moving, is that what you heard?
Yeah, yeah, but that's all out of, that's all out of the, uh.
Cause that elevation.
RV is this?
It's 36 feet.
Long, how wide?
Two twelve feet.
Twelve feet wide.
I don't think.
Yep, so as long as they retain the tires on it, remember we went over this, the, uh. So what couple of classifieds, I think the difference was tiny home or RV, which one is it? So the definition of a tiny home is basically the tires are not on it and it's not considered a vehicle. And it's meant to be deployed and basically similar to a mobile home. This one, in this case, they're leaving the tires on, leaving, leaving it tethered. And you can make an RV, use a homemade RV with a mobile home frame, which is what they're doing. As long as they basically leave the tires on it. I think was the, basically the conclusion that I.
It's like a park model.
Right. That's movable anytime.
Yes.
Just connect and.
Yeah, as long as they leave the plates on it, the, for transportation purposes, the register.
And tunnel, tunnel vehicles.
So you do act, we'll still.
It's like a module, a home frame sort of?
Mobile home.
Mobile home.
And I think they're cutting it, it's not like a full length.
Yeah.
It's custom, but.
But it's for just a residential.
It's just more durable than those cheap, you know, tin camper can, can type.
Campers.
Campers that just keep the leak.
Well, it's about the same as campers slide outs.
But wasn't, wasn't there an original?
My camper, I think, is like eight feet wide, it does have a slide out, maybe probably.
On one side or both sides?
One side.
Yeah, some of them are both.
Yeah, yeah, and I saw it in the ordinance, slide outs are allowed, you know, they don't count that as the area. I think it said 400 square feet was the minimum size. Of the RV, not counting the slide outs, you can actually have that as extra room. So the slide outs in can't be, when they're in, the RV can be 400 square feet. Does that, does that make sense? So that means, so that means when you're, they're out, it's gonna be more than 400 feet, that's what you're allowed for the four. Because they're not counting those slide outs.
Of course, those can't believe they don't have footprint that touches the ground or, or I guess in shoreline zone, they, they count.
So what's we're, I mean, that's where I read the, what the ordinance that, uh, cause it's only, can be only 400 square feet.
Which ordinance is that flood?
The shoreline point, for, for the RV, for, or, um.
Cause they talk about it.
As a, as a, as a camper, um, camper has to, could be considered under the definitions.
It has been, it's the pad, it's supposed to be sort of, uh, thousand square foot. It was in, it was in the original paper.
It was in the definitions.
Oh, it was in the definitions of it?
Yeah, definitions of, I don't know, shoreline zone.
Recreation vehicle means a vehicle which is built on a single chassis, 400 square feet or less. With measured at the largest horizontal projection, not including slide outs. Designed to be self-propelled, propelled or permanently towable by motor vehicle hand, designed primarily not pre-used, permanently drawn, but is temporarily in course for recreational camping travels. So the interesting thing about that is we're looking at both flood plain ordinance and the shoreline zoning ordinance. And where one has a conflict, the other doesn't, it's like, for instance, this is talking about 180 seconds day with shoreline zone. So 128 is, we have to comply with the CESTA, well, they're reading that, believing it, so that, that doesn't apply. But the, what's the square foot of the RV that you're using?
402.
But there's no slide outs, it's just.
Yeah, yeah, that's, yeah, that's what I was explaining, if it, if it was a camper that had slide outs, you wouldn't have to count that anyway, it's the camper itself.
The main box.
Yeah, the main box, so the slide outs would be, would be a bonus, in that case. In this case, the main box is, what, is it twelve by what?
Thirty-six, so. So if it was 11 by 36, that would have an importance, because that would be 36 feet off of that, it'd be this 399 or something.
And aren't you guys, aren't you guys still working on building it?
Yeah.
Yeah, so is that something you'd be able to keep under 400? Here again?
We have to, certainly.
We have to. Cause we're not planning on doing any slide out kind of things.
Ninety-six, so that would be, thirty-six by 11 would be 396, at least by my map, I don't know.
That makes sense, could you?
396, so that would be.
So we could add a, add a slide out?
No, 11 by 30.
If it had.
If, if it had a slide out, yeah.
And you could add a slide out, what's something that, you know, it's, I don't know how you'd do that. We're not, we're not counting those.
Slide on right.
And you could do them on both sides.
Right.
Technically.
Right.
And they shouldn't be able to, you know, be put back in, I don't know how you'd do that, if you let them motor.
It's funny because the recreational vehicle definition, the shoreline zone doesn't mention square foot. But we have to factor that because of the flood plain, because that's why we're here, is the flood plain. So that certainly would, yes, so whatever you're gonna do. Make it 400 square feet, that would be able to.
So that's a city flood zone.
Yeah, flood zone ordinance definitely.
It was the one with the 400 foot, that's right.
And then the recreational vehicle definition, that's where the tires have to remain on the ground. It's very, it's a, it's a wide web of things to follow under, but that, yep, so that would satisfy both those.
Okay, we can do all that.
Or you could just cut it, keep it 12, cut it shorter.
Shorter, yeah.
One way or the other, just.
You just have to keep it under 400.
Under 400.
At 400. Yeah, and then if you wanted to do the bump out, as you're saying, that's, I don't know, like, pretty custom though, yeah.
Yeah.
We will.
That's just a really quick.
That's true.
So we're trying to avoid leaks.
Well, sounds like this, this hobbit hell that you're gonna be building, certainly be keeping it out of water.
My question, uh, what, what, uh, what's the anchoring system now, like?
So we were going to use, uh, the guy wire, what you have on the joint pole, the Barry knows, in the site. So if you have tied out attachment points above grade, so it's just a, it's basically a desk anchor, down below grade.
I have the voice for all I grab one?
Yes, exactly. And we just need to know how many are put in.
Well, what would happen if you had to move that and you've got that?
You just disconnect.
Okay, so, all right, so it'll be, got you.
You have to have.
I had that in my head, but I just needed that little foot.
It says you'd have to have four per side in this.
Yeah, is that what you sent me already? The flood, on the flood thing?
That's just.
Say that again, Jody, sorry.
I think the anchoring is what you sent me for the, yeah, it's that document, yeah, I have that.
Yeah, it's on the website.
I don't have what I sent you, unfortunately.
Yeah, I got it. It talks about the tiles.
The ordinance.
On all four corners. Plus two additional.
That's the flood plain?
That's it, that'd be four per side, yeah. Yeah.
So we have to have eight in total?
Eight, oh, great.
Yeah.
Okay, that's something.
Yeah.
See what the law.
Yeah, I know.
It's not going anywhere.
No, for the manufactured home, standard, yeah, because we have to consider it, yeah.
Cause we did, um, see in survey A and B.
That's right. Yep, that's what entered, that's what causes, look at this one. Yeah, it's funny, is this, if you read that manufacturer homes, anchoring, it says it has to be anchored into a foundation system. But can't have a foundation.
Right. Yeah, yeah.
Little rock is the only, so.
Well, you could, you can have openings in your foundation or.
Oh, right.
Lovers, lower.
Well, it's just, it's just funny, cause trying to maneuver through the ordinance is to try and be right on both sides. One, so one flip, so that this is the only way, if it's on a gravel, so.
Yeah, that's no problem, eight anchor points is no problem.
Yeah, and then obviously with the quick disconnect, right?
Yeah, yeah, it'll just be a chain, basically. Sea shaped thing, a bird, oh, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's just basically a chain.
A sea clamp with a.
It's a bird chain.
Or a carabiner.
So basically bringing in gravel up to about four feet. Then the new.
To the gravel land, so.
Gravel.
Yeah, and they're gonna do, I think, erosion control mulch on the edges to prevent erosion.
It was tapered sides and covered with erosion control, so. For erosion control, I don't know what.
And then something, RV on there. Only one, yeah, four, we want to. And it doesn't have to sit on any blocks?
It will.
Oh, well, yeah.
Yeah, there'd be multiple.
It'd be blocking.
Blocks on, just for support.
Yeah.
Like a block load?
I'm still trying to figure out where the plan board is gonna sign on this flood application. This is my first flood plain application I've done. Might be the first one in Oxford, I'm not.
Now, there's part one and there was a part two on the, you sent it to us.
Yeah. And, uh, it's technically.
I didn't print it, so I, it was different, there was a lot more paper from, from the internet.
I got one of, what, as a development permit platform?
Yeah, yeah, that's, I got that too.
Well, there's part one and then there's a part two.
Oh, there's part two, okay, so. Always, when we sign.
I got it ready.
I think, cause it's issued by, and it's gonna be by the plan board chair, I guess, it's not gonna be done by the whole board. Permit number, I guess, would be 01, it's the first one I've seen all year. Well, no, because, no, that would be for if they had somebody representing.
Oh.
Owner for.
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah.
And then there's this checklist, which is completed by municipal officials, so it's reviewed by the plan board today, reviewed by me today. I'm still unsure if they have to pay a fee, but I can take care of that later. I don't know if we have to save any fees, but, uh, obviously I took care of the, I submitted today. But I think for now, the, where it says municipal officials issued by, I think that if you guys love to approve it, that's where, my guess is just share with someone. And then on the part one and two, I think you would also sign a date, and then I would give it permit number one and two. And then this form has to be attached to, which I read, is what part two was talking about, on the flood elevation certificate. And I don't know, you sign that? Yeah, you'll, you'll do that on mine.
We will need a, we will need a, as built elevation certificate here.
So I got.
To verify the, the, uh, what's, what's.
And then I think that's the condition of the occupancy, which, you have to sign that?
I don't.
No, we just have to have that, okay, so.
Be, be the surveyor.
So Barry's gonna have to do that and that'll be part of the occupancy, because after you issue the building permit, so like, three things. So the plan board does their thing tonight, signs up on it, then you come to me, do the building permit, then I have the building permit. Just followed through with, in order to get occupancy occupied, certain dwelling, another elevation certificate to confirm where that is, that would be submitted, I just have to.
Says here, new elevation certificate may require new construction of buildings. So right now, I'm here, this is based on construction.
And that's, that's in this certificate here, right?
Yeah.
So is there any more that the board signs on this certificate?
No.
I might have to sign your version.
What?
I might have to sign it, because Barry said I have to sign page three.
Yeah, yeah, so if you wanna do that. Uh, okay, so I think where we're at now is as long as, and this is my, this is the copy that Jill ended up signing, Keith. And I think you checked it off. This is going here, I wanna do it, do it here. But the chief sign in there, David in there. Day 1122. And then you'll come see me for the address too, I'll take care of that when we do the building permit, we can give it an address too.
Well.
I know.
We had to prove.
There's a lot, there's a lot.
He just wants to get rumors, I think, cause I, I plug him all the time.
There's a lot to that. There's a lot to.
No, he's one of the, you've been very helpful, cause this was confusing.
Tell them it was a warrant.
That was this for us?
Lots of hoops. He jumped through a lot of hoops for all of this, we really appreciate that too.
Well, I, I, I mean, if it's, if it's gonna be a hard no, I would've told you, but if there's a possibility for a yes, and you do what you gotta do, then, hey, no reason why the board should review it.
Yeah.
Say yay or nay, but.
Yeah, we appreciate it.
All right, they send this, um, all right, so I think it's up to the board now.
Any more discussion?
No questions?
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll second the motion.
Well, I'll entertain a motion.
Oh, yeah.
I had, I had the clock issue.
Yeah, I've got, I've got issues.
I make a motion to accept.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
All right, so now we gotta figure out, make sure you're.
He always counts.
So, issue by.
He has to vote for you.
So let me get three and four.
I couldn't bribe.
Okay, good.
So. I had to work it must be fast.
Yeah, I agree. Submitted or, or accepted.
Two, 23.
Change the date, go back about 1987.
Yeah, that's a good year.
It was.
I don't wanna tell you, but I was, I was at the Al, the Alphorn.
Good Lord, I got my driver's license out here. Only thing I had to worry about was playing football and snowmobiling. I was good.
And gas was last little.
Yeah.
Even I remember those days, I tried one from Florida in 1996, so it was like 87 per gallon, or nine tenths of a gallon down in Georgia.
When I was a petroleum transfer and engineer at Mike's place, across from the old, where Andrew's Dog and Bank is in high school. It was in the nineties, fuel was nineties gallon, and then Saddam went into Kuwait in August of 90. We went up over like a dollar three. People were just kind of unglued. I was a 16, 17 year old high school kid, getting to calculate the prices, but I remember going up over a dollar then, look, Lord, it was brutal. People were just kind of unglued, I was a sixteen, seventeen-year-old high school kid, I can't believe the prices, but, I remember going up over a dollar then, look, lord, they were brutal.
Isn't this, I'm old enough to remember twenty-five cent...
Kane, so did you fix that three...
Yeah, me too.
Make the razor, yeah, in high test was twenty-seven.
Four feet, and that second gate and then same thing.
And my, my super sport was five.
Motorcycle's a quarter to fill.
Yeah.
Gallon, a gallon.
Yeah, oh yeah, we get a couple gallons, this kid had sixty-two Ozenbeal problems, sorry.
Good thing we're on top of things.
Remember we talked about it in the office?
Yeah, and then we talked about everything else.
I don't have any H P or two five. Okay, so that's good, this is good, all right, I think we are ready to go, gentlemen.
All right, thank you guys.
We don't have anything for us to sign?
No, Keith, is that...
All right, only one signature, so my sign. I got your bag, I got your bag.
I have a stack, it's up for buy, do or die.
Well, that was just painless, like, oh, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
You're welcome, enjoy.
Enjoy.
Good luck.
Yeah, thanks. Do you need to work with us, or is that something?
I gotta, I, I think we're gonna talk about it with the next, yeah, in the office, but I think, for some reason, I think there's something that has to go to registry, I'm not sure.
State, state flood plain program?
I think, I think, yeah, I think I've got forward something to them, but I think I take care of that on my end, and, yeah, we'll, we'll talk about it when you come in for the...
Okay, great.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You guys.
I've got two papers.
Yeah, I, I got to her, uh, actually, no, I think it was really, uh, the pair, she did my, hold it up, I'm teaching, showing me how to do all this stuff. But I think Sue, yes, she had...
Associate, the associate works with us, they're, they're still, they're still working from home.
Yeah, oh yeah.
Coding.
Oh yeah?
Yeah.
So, uh, we haven't adjourned yet, correct?
No.
Okay, in the interim, uh, I think you, you guys are talking with him anyway, but Al here is the potential local, local prospective board, so, you know, if you wanted to say anything, you don't have to...
So what would you do, would you throw me questions, I don't know what's in the ordinance, when he was the fifth little skydawson, there's a certain requirement for that, you have to be so deep, what's in the ground that doesn't fall out, is any of that in the ordinance or in...
Anchored?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, is there a strict...
I didn't see anything about it, it said it had to be anchored, and it had to be, so that you could release it and move it in case of...
Yeah, that's the... It does say, it's supposed, each one's supposed to be able to carry a force of four thousand meter amount, so, how do you test that?
But that comes from the main, it's not in our, it's not in our ordinance, but we have to follow the main, we have, we can't be less stricter than that, we could be stricter, we could add an extra structure.
Is that the flood standards?
Maybe a lot of flood plain management, I don't know, I got it off the website.
Oh.
I only made it printed off the...
Oh, we did, yeah, this is a... Did I snapshot it?
Well, I printed, well, this is the, yeah, printed it in.
I printed it, I think.
Couple of them, this is where, you know, I talked about, I mean, if you don't do A and B, then you have to do C, and then it's just referred to...
And that's ethical, six G one A B, is the way to, is that what you were just reading?
And I just print it out, no... I think I printed it out for a...
At first, six G four A B.
We need much L A M A.
So where are you?
Oh, you guys are talking great. Well, not official yet.
No, but I'm officially, that's it in.
All right.
Very good, thank you.
I got another guy who fills it out, he just keeps forgetting to drop it off.
So basically, your question is, where do you, where do you find all that information?
Yeah, where do you find it, I mean, does he put it one foot deep in the ground, is it gonna be twenty feet, is it gonna be T, is it gonna be, how are you anchoring that to it, you could grab them and go on top of that, so that'll, that'll clear it up. Yeah, I, I, that's one of the things that come across on my, yeah, do you guys ever go out and look at the site? You do, you want to get a look, see what you're going with?
If they, yeah, if they decide to do a site, a site walk, that's something they would have to do before, while, if they, if they decide to do a site...
Oh, we approve anything.
Right, yeah.
Do it at the, if it had to be a meeting, it may not be a scheduled meeting, but it would have to be a meeting that public could attend as well.
They have to have seven days.
So that would be part of tonight, before any approval, you go out there, tell me what you're gonna do, what you're, what's your plan, so I can get a picture.
So Google Earth is a really good tool for me.
What is?
Google Earth.
Ah, I know.
And it's a really great tool for me, and, uh, so, obviously, I've set it out, I also have familiarity with the FEMA flood map, so I can look at those on my own. I, I access them all the time for what I do, I'm also a land surveyor.
Oh, okay.
And, uh, so I have, this is right here in town, and, um...
And you can get a copy.
And you can do, and everybody can do this, it's just not because I'm four AM, it's just that that's what I do.
Right.
And, and anybody can do this, so Google Earth is a really neat tool.
And it gives you different heights, is that what that is?
Google Earth, so what you can do, you can do an old plate location, it will give you the terrain, but it's not that great.
It's not that great.
It's not like this, contours and stuff, but, um, no, so in this case, it didn't really, but the flood map clearly show, we have to go by that to FEMA. This is a FEMA, um, product that is statute by statute, adopted by statute, and, uh, so we have to follow the rules of FEMA when it comes to elevations and stuff like that, and they, 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 they're the one that presented the three oh nine, the elevation of flood, that's where it's at.
Statute.
And states, statute says, you can build in the flood zone, but you gotta be one foot above your finished floor, your first finished floor has to be, that might be your basement, has to be one foot above that base of elevation. Or they could have a choice to move it out, there is...
Well, because it also is in the shoreline zone, they would have to move it out every hundred and twenty days, in order for it not to be considered dwelling, it's a technical thing.
So they move it out for how many days, hours?
For, they can only, they can only be on their hundred and eighty consecutive days.
Per month.
In years, in one year, so that means they have their hundred and eighty-four days, is that right?
Yep.
And a half?
Sixteen.
Is that right? They have to have it either removed, or they could go from, I guess, could they do it incrementally, like, one, one month here, skip a month, one month here?
I think it's in the calendar year, so...
I don't know how they, how, I was gonna ask that question, if they were gonna be doing that, whether, how are they gonna monitor the, if, how to go there.
They're right, they're right there.
Yeah, so, and, and they're also gonna get, so, they're also lifted in to the, to the...
Right, yeah, so it ended up being on, um, we don't have page numbers on this, but it's in the manufactured home section, where it talks about forty-eight hundred pounds, so what he, what he was talking about was similar to what a telephone pole does, which ends up eating like forks in the ground.
Like, like post, yeah, they're after heavy duty.
Those things can certainly withstand that forty-eight hundred pounds.
Hold stamp.
So they're gonna have rings that they'll tie those quick straps to, and those quick straps can be easily untrapped.
But as far as, but as far as, that's not, that's your job to enforce that, you're the, right?
Yep.
Great instruction.
When, when it comes time for me to do the building permit, I'm gonna put on there, uh, placard where it tells you when they're ready for inspections, when I look at the foundation, and then before backfill, those are the times when I go and look at, confirm or deny that those are in place.
That'd look a little odd to them, that, for my personal...
Especially since there's like three cabinets out there that probably placed that predated all this stuff that are like right on the ground, and it's sitting pretty.
Before FEMA's, FEMA and all this stuff is.
They have to leave in there?
So twelve by thirty-six, that's not very big, so you could only have the minimum of four hundred and eighty over, it would be a low vote.
That would be, yeah, can't do it.
Yes, because of the size of the property. Because of the size of the property.
Oh, okay, so if it had to be a lot...
No, because it's an RV.
Oh, it's an RV.
I thought it was originally because of the size of the property.
No, it's under the flood zone, a RV, because then it's not considered an RV, now a mod is our home, or, or a home.
But, yeah, but the get go, they can only, because of size of property, only thing they can do on there, I guess.
Is an RV, and then, and then with the planning board, you guys, during the shoreline zone application, were able to give them, uh, an exception to setback standards, because it would keep the characteristics with the locality, this is what, how it's worded. Uh, so, well, that was part of the shoreline zoning process, and, and because of where the pad was gonna go, and it wasn't a permanent pad, it, it's, it was able to be placed here.
It does, yeah, the ordinance just law was to be, like, a waiver.
Yeah, but it's only for an RV.
Yeah.
Like, nowhere else could do that, and that's, so that's why they had to maintain that it wasn't...
Down the first...
Well, that's, that's why we had to consider what the definition of an RV was on two different ordinances, and it was interesting that they had two different, kind of, almost not conflicting, but, it was like full, well-rounded definition of what that is, so long as they satisfy those requirements.
So where do you have it at, Bill?
Uh, Winterbrook, uh, right, you know, holding upon Lena's, or Rabbit Valley Road.
Who's doing the RV for?
Oh, they're building it themselves, I think the gentleman is.
Oh, that's why when you said about the slide outs, he never, he's never put a slide out before.
Or, or maybe they're hiring carpenters.
Yeah, yeah.
I think he was doing it himself.
Sounds like to me he was doing it himself, like, a hundred percent.
Well, they said with the slide out going to yourself, that's just...
Yeah, it's a little game, you gotta make sure it seals, it don't leak, and it don't fall off.
That's gonna be an engineering feat, though, for to do the...
No, like the slide out, well, it's a mobile.
I got one on my hand.
I got to say, well, I make a motion to...
I'll second that.
All in, all in favor?
All in favor.
Sorry for you to... Whatever, I, I would've heard, see that, I was like, all right.
All right, well, thanks, gentlemen.
All right, let's go get the party started.
I'm off.